Dean, roll call please.
We have eleven.
President.
Bill Giffen.
Here.
Bill Hamm.
Here.
Tyler Charis, absent at Rich West.
President. I'll stand and pledge.
My ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I want everyone to know that this meeting is being recorded. You speak, you're agreeing to it being recorded. It'll be on later on our Towns YouTube channel. This time, people in the room and people online, please mute your phones. First on the agenda is the second reading for Orders 2022 Day 005. Orders of mending the parking ordinance.
Um, yeah, I've given you guys a new copy because we've made some changes at the last meeting. I've made those changes and then we had some feedback from a resident about Tampa Street. Tampa Street doesn't get a ton of people parking on it, but we do have some parking on it. It's not been an issue for us. I originally had put it in as no parking, but we've removed that, knowing there is parking occurring there and it is passable. And we don't have issues with this. So that's the only thing that I changed in addition to your prior changes that you had. So it's ready for your second pass reading.
Good question.
Uh huh.
Is there another way we could reword Jefferson Street? Door parking shall not be restricted.
We can say is allowed.
Is the two hour restrictions after 12:00?
Um, yeah, so we're talking to about this area right up here by the DFW. Part of that is restricted because some of our side streets have the eight to four restriction. Um, and then it's not restricted outside of those hours. So if you were parking there at six o'clock, you could conceivably park it all night.
On Jefferson?
Yes, but only on the north and south sides from Ohio Street to Plymouth Street. So it's literally this chunk out here by the DFW. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Jefferson, the next one down. Yeah, it's just that chunk. And we do have similar parking here on Washington.
Basically, all the roads that come off of Main Street are restricted to our parkings like Madison, Jefferson, Washington, or all that one. From the Jefferson to the aisle.
Yeah, and it's for
Or from Main Street.
The purposes of allowing businesses on Main Street to have some additional parking. That makes sense.
Okay, I understood the purpose was to support the business community to turn over those spaces.
We do have like, in some cases, we have shall not be restricted. And then in other cases, we have allowed, you know. And I think the where it says shall not be restricted is when it's typically the business hours, whereas the other ones, it's in general, most of these are to show the restriction of parking.
Is that a legal way of describing it?
Shall not be that restricted. Shall not be restricted, that's fine.
I, I was confused a little too.
And I think we took, I basically use the same language that is in the original ordinance, which is uh, two twenty, twenty twenty slash zero one zero. We're mending that one. So we're adding all of these to something that reads similarly.
On Jefferson Street, after the corner, after four o'clock, there's a two hour restriction on that parking.
No. And our signs match that. So where we had a sign that didn't match, we also made a change.
So basically, what was, I mean, we're saying there's no restriction on parking on Jefferson Street in that area. Because we're taking away the restriction at eight to four, and we're saying after four o'clock, there's no two hour restriction. There are no restrictions on parking.
Right, and I, I think we actually did that. Oh, I'm trying to think of if we did that last time.
I thought you brought the original ordinance from 2000 right in for that piece. I don't think it had any restrictions other than electric vehicles.
Uh huh.
So a straight two hour period. I agree again.
North and south sides from Ohio to Plymouth. Need to go out and look because it might just be that one block. Because we might have it restricted on the other side. Or further down, I don't know. Now, it might say shall be restricted. Because down Jefferson Street, we now have additional parking. Okay.
We're looking.
Yeah, that, I think that should be shall be restricted.
Well, my guess was is when you had the shall not be restricted, you were modifying the prior ordinance where you had the restrictions.
Right.
That's the confusion. So in answer to the question, it might be better to just report it.
Yeah, currently, we restrict it.
So we just double check and bring it back two weeks?
Yeah, I think we could do second pass. And I feel like we need to do that because we have feedback after first pass.
Okay.
So we could get more feedback. And I'll check to make sure, I'll look at the original one too, to make sure we didn't change something signage wise.
Do we need a motion to
Need a motion, well, to extend the reading. Motion to pass on second reading. With the
Potential amendment of this one.
Motion to pass on the second reading with the amendment. Bill, please.
I mean, I know currently this block is restricted and it should be restricted, so we just need to take out the knot.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Hamm, seconded by Bill Clevinger to move on second reading with the changes that Jenny's making.
Next, no.
Any further discussions?
Yeah, just Jefferson Street.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Yeah.
So basically, with one minor exception, the intention is you're not changing what the language, what's here is not the intention is not to change anything from what there is, just for clarification.
Yeah. We had several that weren't matching our signage, and in some cases, we've added roads that need restriction. But in other cases, it was, we said no parking on the east side, but if you go out and look, it's actually on the west side, those sort of changes.
But there's not going to be a substantive change, just a language clarification.
Yes.
Clarification.
And yeah, like I said to Bill, I really don't think we should do a third pass because we've had feedback in between all of these from actual citizens.
Moving on, RFP for snow removal.
Um, yeah, we, so I got with Bob, we're ready to put an RFP out. The only thing we've really changed in that RFP is that we're going to ask the bidders to line item their bid per event. Currently, that's how our RFP reads, is that we're specifically saying you have to remove the snow, starting at 5:00 AM for two inches or more. But we also, Bob pointed out that sometimes we have an ice event or a light dusting and we want salt. So we've added that, where we would want a quote for that. We also require them to salt after they've removed the snow. So, um, and in the past, that contract that we had with the current vendor, it's line itemized by the amount of snow. So from like 4.1 inches to six inches, it's one cost. From 6.1 plus, it's another cost. So we've identified how we'd like each one of those events, we want each one of them put in, this is what you would charge for that event.
What is the official measurement?
Officially, they have to remove it if there's two inches or more.
Who's measuring all this?
The vendor or us, but it also reads and or if Bob or I ask for it to be done. So if we have something unusual or a mix of snow and rain and we want something done. And then, in the previous ordinance, it allowed them to put snow into the park or at the street building. The park parking lot is not really an ideal place for it, so we've identified that it'll either go out to the street garage and or where Bob or I would identify. We don't necessarily want them just putting it randomly in the park.
Could use the water tower drive or water tower lots.
Possibly.
Possibly. Could change it to, I'd rather it be out of the street rather than here.
So those were the things we changed. And then we'd like to go ahead and put it out with a due date coming back before your first October meeting. Then you could open them at that meeting. And we can compare, compare those contracts. Knowing we've got these different line items, it might be something we're going to want to study after we get them in. Um, and then you guys could make a decision at, well, Bob and I would go through them and give you a recommendation and make a decision at your next meeting.
The second meeting in October.
Yeah, we figured about 30 days for them to review and submit a bid.
Okay.
I think you're, the second meeting in September is probably too soon.
Right.
But yeah, if you're good with that, we'll go ahead and get it out to some vendors and put on the website, et cetera.
Want a motion? There are motion to put out the RFP for snow removal.
Same.
Motion made by Bill Hamm, seconded by Rich West to put the RFP out for snow removal. Due back by the first meeting in October. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we'll get that out tomorrow. That should be good.
Thank you. Next is unsafe building update. I can tell everybody that the demolition has been done on 709 of Bispo by the owner. So we called and, I mean, Jenny notified the people that picked up the bid packets that they didn't need to be here tonight. So we can move on to the next item.
And we do have the upcoming unsafe building meeting.
Bringing your evidence here. At 5:30 before the next council meeting on the 27th. Thank you. Town manager report.
All right, so don't forget, I'm going to start with something that's not on there that came to me this afternoon. The McCormick's contacted Bob to take a look at the Papa's parking lot. And I've got a survey of one of their parcels, which is the one their building is on, but they actually own the parcel behind them as well, where they have additional parking. And as you guys probably are aware, we own a parcel along the edge of their property, between their property and the park and the Academy property. Currently, how that parking lot is paved, some of their parking spots come on to the town strip. And we own a fairly narrow strip along there. And I think it's where the old railroad used to come into town is the strip we have. So that parking lot is, I think Brian told us, 23 years old and they want to redo the whole lot. It's a pretty expensive investment, so while they're doing it, they want to deal with some drainage and some deterioration of the pavement along the edge, they'd like to curb it. But if they were to curb where the lot currently is, they would need an easement from us because part of that is coming on to our strip of land. If we were to require them to curb it along their own property line, they will potentially lose some parking spaces along the east side and south side of the lot. So Bob and I looked at it today and I explained to Brian that that's not a decision that Bob and I can make, that they would have to I'd have to let you know, if you're open to the idea of an easement, we will get more into details with them. I, I believe looking at the survey their building is on that I have here, I think we're going to need a survey of their back parking lot. And Beacon shows our strip of land and I've tried to print it and it's just not a great print. So, um, if we were to write something up, obviously I would want to have Jim take a look at that. There's a small little chunk of their parking lot that might even extend past our strip into Academy area.
They're going to pay you for the easement?
Well, that's the other thing, I think we would have to decide if there was a fee for that. So there's a part of this, there's a trail, obviously, that goes through the Academy land that we have an easement on. There's a little piece of trail that comes up to their parking lot that we bring our gator up. And typically, the park staff brings trash back to that dumpster by the water tower. And what they'll do is bring the gator up that little path, they'll either use his parking lot to get there, or they'll use our strip of land, depending on how the trees are growing over. And right now, Papa's is maintaining our strip. They mow it and keep it cleaned up because it's next to their parking lot and for obvious reasons, they want to keep it spiffy looking. They're open to keeping an open section of that curving so that the gator or one of our trucks could still enter their parking lot if we wanted to get back to the dumpster or the water tower from their lot.
Where's the gator?
So you're not see, this is where the building is at.
Right.
This is actually a separate parcel that stretches out. This is not, this is literally one of the parcels. We enter up through this way, right about through here, I'd say. Our strip, we can go up this little strip right here, or they come in like this and come through the parking lot and they head back here. So it's much easier to see it on Beacon.
Yeah.
See, here's the, here's the other parcel, see how it stretches beyond, here's their building, here's our strip right there.
Oh, I see, okay.
So that gator thing comes up like this and we either go that way or we come into the lot and get back.
Overgrowing with shrubs and stuff.
Sometimes it is, yeah. So we have not done any work, obviously, on, on this, but he obviously would like to get this paved probably before winter sets in. And before we do some homework or I work on an easement draft, I wanted to find out what you guys think, if you're open to this or not.
I think it's advantageous to us to allow there to go as much parking as possible without ending up in the parking lot or park or other common area spaces. Is there any functional use of that easement that we have, I mean, is there utilities running through there or anything underneath it?
And we're never going to do anything with our strip of land in there.
Well, it's up to you guys, that's why I wanted to.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not built, I mean.
No, it's just, I think it's 14 feet wide.
Yeah.
Right now, part of their, yeah.
And then it butts up to the Academy.
You have the Academy, so Papa's on the north, you have that little strip and it goes up into the water tower, Brian.
I would think if they're willing to access area to transit through their parking lot and give us that in the draft. I don't see what objection would be allowing them to curb that and get that maintenance there.
Yeah, he said he wanted to be neighborly about, he doesn't care when our gator goes through or the truck goes through or and you know, I was telling Bill earlier, it's not like we would put a trail there because one, it's not big enough, but also do we really want people walking back to our dumpster and our water tower? You know, we're not encouraging traffic to go that way anyway. We just personally use it and he's obviously not opposed to us using his lot and or that strip. And he's still willing to maintain the strip. So, yeah, I told him though, that it would be up to you guys whether we would.
And they want to be good neighbors as do we. So all we're doing is proceeding forward with, let's see, plans and
I think your point would be that we would need an easement from them, allowing us to use our gator or trucks on their parking lot. And we'd give them an easement to stretch their parking.
And they would, they would maintain both parking area and put a drainage along other areas.
Okay.
We have an agreement with them to cut the grass?
No, they've just been doing it.
Jim, I've got a question. They've been, if that piece of property was, they've been cutting the grass as ours. And they've been doing it for a long time and we have objection to it.
They can't get it by adverse possession because they're a governmental entity.
Okay.
But I like the idea though of including in your easements exchanges
Right.
that they have that duty to maintain and continue, so it would be act as a sort of consideration for granting them your easement, you know, that easement of your property.
In the future, if ownership turns over, you got that.
You've got that to go back.
Further north, there's another driveway that comes up into the back end of the of the water tower parking lot. Is that Academy property, is that ours, is that involved in the stall or?
Back in that point?
Yeah. If you go a hundred yards further, there's another driveway that comes up from the, from the trail.
Yeah, that's ours.
Yes.
We own a point back down, there may be a little sliver of it that's Academy.
Okay.
Most of that point.
I just didn't know if any of it was involved in this, but it's not this.
It's further north, okay.
Um, and then related to the water tower parking lot, I had somebody contact me about would the town ever consider selling the front portion of that property on Lake Shore Drive? And I said, well, I really can't answer that for you, the town council would have to take that under consideration, so.
On the water tower lot? There's water main grid, I don't know.
That wouldn't make sense.
And then the only other access would be these
Yeah.
small drive or alleyway, which is the landmark or tower.
Well, and as I explained to them, it's been great for overflow parking, for perk events and stuff, and that we do utilize that lot. And I didn't know what was underneath it, so it makes sense to leave it as is.
Okay, so you, you have a motion or you've got
Well, I would like you to authorize me to work on it with Brian because I don't want to spend the time and energy if you're not
We have a motion.
I believe we expect the town manager to negotiate with our legal counsel and Papa's easement agreement with that strip of land and their parking lot.
Motion made by Rich and seconded by Bill to allow the town manager to talk to Papa's about future of getting an easement and curving and
Maintenance.
Maintenance and everything. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried.
Okay, thanks.
I'm moving on to the town manager.
All right. Lots of dates there for you, obviously. I'm going to skip past unsafe buildings that you've already covered. Um, the only update on those first two end up projects that we've kind of paired together, the Slate and Jefferson Trail and Lake Max III. I have received an early coordination letter for environmental on Slate and Jefferson. That just means that's moving along. Usually when they send a coordination letter, they're contacting agencies, providing the environmental study to those agencies. If those agencies have an issue, we're notified. So we've seen a little bit of movement there at least. We do have the signed agreement from Culver Academies on the utility agreement for up there by Fleet, Fleet and so we can move along with that project if we want. Mr. Collins is supposed to return from his vacation, so we can work out the easement on Davis Street. Basically, I need Wayne and him to approve of a small paragraph to add to that. The VS engineering proposal that's related to the community crossing grant application that we submitted August 31st. We haven't heard on that yet, but I think last time, a good four to six weeks before we heard on that. So, yeah. The Park Department, Park Crossroad Stellar Project, Thomas Excavating is planning on starting that very soon. Either end of this week or sometime next week. And so we're going to try to coordinate with La Paz to get the playground equipment when, when they remove that. We're also trying to coordinate where to move the, the farmer's market. And, you know, it all depends on exactly the date that Thomas starts, but we're being told next week, so. And that Beach Lodge Building Drainage Project is a Thomas excavating project, so they will be removing playground equipment and doing the drainage project first.
One question.
Uh huh.
What happens to that playground equipment?
The old equipment will go to La Paz, you guys approved of us basically donating that.
Okay.
And I don't, I believe it'll take most, all of it, they came down at one point, I think, and took a look at it with Amber. They're actually doing a park project as part of regional stellar plan, so I think they're going to incorporate that into their part.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, it's kind of nice that it doesn't get just thrown out. We already did parking ordinance update. Memo to the county regarding emergency services, like I said, I'm just leaving this on there. I know Jeff is meeting with Matt Pitney and having a discussion about the communication system. So we'll let you know how that goes.
They entered into a contract with Berry Ritter's Services to do a, the county did, and the sheriff, to do a full blown review of the dispatch information. And a considerable amount, he acted like it's going to be 500 and some hours, so they're not going to get an immediate kind of a deal, although if he sees something right away, he's supposed to address that. So, so you know, you're banging the drum has at least got consultant involved in some kind of activity, whether that leads to result or not, I don't know, but just to let you know.
Uh, community crossing grant, we've already gone over that, but this is the current one. And that paving is supposed to start like literally any day, I think they Yeah, milling was to go this week and I think the reason we haven't seen them yet is just the rain. Rob and Task Force, as I was telling Bill before the meeting started, Karen put out an email on some list serves and I've got a sample contract now. And Bob and I on Friday are going to meet with Plymouth as well as Bourbon. They've sort of done fiber install projects and we're meeting with them just to learn what we're up against. What could go right or wrong, how the boring works. I'm not finding that a lot of communities actually have contracts involved in these projects, so the fact that we've got one is helpful, I think.
I'm just the engagement services.
Yeah.
Define the scope for committee on this.
Yes.
Was their scope for calls to include assistance with the contract or do you have any expertise in that area?
He'll stick with us as long as we want him to, but we can does the tools. I just don't want to use a lot of his hours until I give him a draft of some sort. So I think after this meeting and after I review the draft that Karen got solicited for us, I'll be able to come up with a graph to share with him and you guys. And then after you guys do a review and Jim does a review, I'll then take it back to Surf and let them And then after you guys do a review and Jim does a review, um, I'll then take it back to surf and let them. Come through it with their attorney. Uh, but I'm hoping we can get, I can get a full draft to us for the next meeting. Um. So that's broadband pass force. Uh, Crossroads Culver still working on a cop plan and I did get invited to a meeting. On the nineteenth with the RDA. It's a like six hour meeting that you're allowed to attend. I think they're doing it online as well. So probably just keep it on in the office. I believe at that meeting, they are making decisions about that first round of ready grant applications. So we may know something. Um, in the next week or two, uh, whether or not we got the housing ready grant.
Just to piggyback on that, on the comp plan, I distributed to members of the council and Karen and Jenny copies of. The, um, the spot analysis that had been done by the Crossroads team. Um, they're looking for expanded input on this, um, that's like town leadership and other business leaders to, to respond. Um, Donnie is putting, put all that data together. Um, again, there was. Six areas, uh, downtown area, parks and recreation, um, some other, uh, housing and things like that. And they're asking that people vote on their top ten priorities if they see that, and then return them, um, so that they can get.
Yeah, if you guys could get those to my office, ideally every one of you should fill it out. Do you want me to, um, we have plan commission of VZA coming up. Do you want me to get, hand that out to them as well?
If you want to, I mean, I think, I don't know if Don would do that because. But I think, and they're looking for. So I mean, I've taken a couple of the merchants, go about to feedback on these. Um, I've talked to, uh. Two or three of them and they're circulated and will get us feedback. So.
And I was going to give it to, um, Jesse Gilly is now, um, serving as the acting director for chamber. Said I could give it to Jesse and let's see if she can drum up responses from some of the chamber members or business owners.
You wrote the questionnaire, did the design?
Um, that was through MACO.
They've done a lot of these.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
They have an entire planning division.
It's, there's a whole process we've gone through in the last three meetings where you did brainstorming to come up with just categories or ideas and then. We're done shifting them into, into sort of buckets, if you will, of housing or downtown development, things like that. And then. Building on them in a rank order anyway, so.
Yeah, and I think they really wanted to go beyond that Frostwoods Culver team. There's a good mix of stakeholders on that committee. But, um, I think you guys identified. Let's get it out to all elected officials, et cetera. So take the time to read that email Rich sent out and if you want it printed or you need, you need to do something with it, just bring it to my office. I will get the, your results back to Donnie. Uh, and I'll take it to Rich because I was on vacation when you did it.
That's, I know you were on vacation. That's why I sent it out. Want to get it rolling. So it's, I mean, I think sending feedback to Jenny would be great.
Um, and I do a Thursday call with MACO, like a status call. So. Uh, he'll ask me about whether you guys have done it yet. And he may push a little on you too, because he's, he's pretty good at doing that. Um, so I'll let you know about if we do find out about the ready grant, I'll send an email out on that. And then, um, Tammerack Road Housing Fund, uh, Burke Richardson has written me this week. Um, wants to get going on the annexation process. So I will get a meeting with him. Um. That does require a development agreement and emergency services plan and that sort of documentation. So I will probably lean on Jim. A lot to review anything I touch with that, uh, just so you know, when Jim fills us. Uh, I think that's it. So.
Thank you. Jeff, are you on for you a minute? Barry?
I don't have anything for you tonight.
Wayne, are you on? Amber? Bob?
Two items for your consideration.
Salt for this year.
Oh, salt, good. I lay authorization worth two hundred tons. Price of one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars delivered to the street garage.
We got, he, he had no success in getting anybody to slow boat it.
I'll get what I can in there and the rest will lose out. We'll deal with it. I'd rather have it than not.
So, one thousand.
Five hundred and fifty.
Dollar. There are motions to, uh, allow Bob to buy salt. Motion made by Bill Cleven, you're seconded by Bill Hand. Who will allow Bob to purchase two hundred tons of salt, cost of one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and store it. Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign?
Second item is for your consideration is the purchase of a leaf back truck. Source will quote for a hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred dollars and totally free.
Come that by me again.
That's what we.
One eight four nine zero zero point four three.
So you're impressed by its performance?
Yes. We didn't get a chance to suck up wet heavy leaves, but I think we'll be okay. There are motions to, there are motions to purchase a leaf back back truck.
Second.
Motion made by. Bill Cleven, you're seconded by Bill Hand to purchase a meat back truck and the cost of a hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred dollars and forty-three cents. Any further discussion?
Just how, um, where are these funds coming from? What are we talking about?
The M D H funds as the best possible way. While there's additional appropriations.
Thank you.
Motion made the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
I also want to make a request on behalf of Bob's department to advertise for, um, replacing a full-time employee and a part-time employee. Um, one who has given notice and we can have further discussion under. Our future meeting, but we need to get advertising for those replacements. And what we may do is, um, Bob's considering moving. One employee. So we may be advertising this for utility department versus street department. Um, but we'll work out the details of that and get an ad ready.
Second bill's motion.
Motion made by Bill, seconded by Rich West to authorize Bob to. Advertise for a full-time position and one part-time position. Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Carry.
I'll get that to you tomorrow. I want it by you and Karen before we send it out. We'll figure out where to send it.
Uh, you and I talked a few or two ago about electric charging station. You want to just tell everybody what you found out about. How well we're doing is composed to, composed to other areas.
Have that information with me, but I was told by MACO.
Right.
Discharging station is doing more usage than Mishawaka and the Ocean Library come up.
Just want everybody to know that. In Houston, and of course, like you said, the first two hours is free.
First two, first two hours are free. After that, we need to come up with a rate. For fee for the, for after two hours moving on. So they don't have to sit there all night.
Is it, is it already have the hardware or software?
Yes, all we have to do is present your fee ordinance to them and they will program it and.
And they agree with MACO is first of all is free and after that we charge for the first year.
First two years, first two.
And right now, does it keep charging or does it stop?
Nope, keep charging.
Okay.
Which two mi- uh, communities to commit, Mishawaka and Ocean Library.
Library.
So I think what we need to do is, I mean, you know, two hours free, the guy can pull it, drive around the block, get another two hours free.
Yeah, they're just parked.
Charge point has.
I know, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, now they're just parked and, you know.
I'm sure we set it off after two hours.
What?
I, I'm sure we've set it off after two hours, but I'd rather have a feast or a sharing.
Well, that's, that's, that's the purpose of bringing it up for everybody to be aware and we can, not going to do anything tonight, but I just want everybody to. To know how, how much use it is. I mean, you can drive by and see that it's hardly ever empty during the daytime.
But you get motion on that or?
I should wait. I know that for Tesla, that Tesla's charging stations, they have a penalty for staying there after you're charged. So if you go to the mall, pull up, say, I'm going to go to lunch, I'm going to shop for three, four hours and your car is fully charged in an hour. Come back and move your car, Tesla will start charging you money for staying there because other people are, are depressed. So I don't know if there's some sort of a.
Going to be something we're going to have to all look at, look into all the whys and wherefore's.
Yeah, we need some data on this.
Yeah, we need data, you know, and all, so, but thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Motion to move in that direction because.
We'll get, we'll do some homework for you.
I think we're fine. Thank. Anything else, sir? Thank you for bringing that up. Looks report.
I have a couple of invoices that I mentioned to approve that are over twenty-five hundred. Uh, the first one is Travelers, uh, two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and that is for the. Increase with things come up for the fire department. Um, well, it's actually the fire department with this come up. Play and then you all agreed to up their, you know, that they're, um, eligible for if they have to follow what needs to play. Alexander Chemical Corp, two thousand six oh nine thirteen, first chemicals, R and B sales, six thousand. Eight, and that's for equipment, um. Installing the new swastikas, uh, Xylem, ten thousand three forty-five twenty-four, and that's for sewer repairs. And then finally put Phoenix State the Outfitters, fourteen thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. Those are for the uniforms for the fire department. And they did secure a five thousand dollar grant to pay for part of those uniforms. Um, so. Actually, you did approve this earlier, but just wanted to make you aware that this is coming in and then we will go ahead and. And then paperwork to be released.
That costs is nine thousand.
It ends up being.
Good job on that.
No, it's not done yet.
Is there a motion approved, claims over twenty-five hundred?
Moving.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Bill Ham. To prove, uh, claims over twenty-five hundred. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Um, budgets, um, after probably ten hours total of discussions and presentations and whatnot, um. Got everything together. I was able to submit the budget notice on Gateway. It is posted on the bulletin board. I posted it to the website. And I also sent it out to the media and Towne Fountain Lake. Um, and it's available on the DLGF website as well. Um, a medical trust, that's our health insurance for the town employees. Um, they provided their renewal information and it came on, came three percent under what we had budgeted. Um, and so at, you know, kind of want to recognize the employees for completely keeping themselves healthy. Um, and I just wanted to make, I had, I need to provide information from them as they're getting ready for open enrollment. Um, just want to make sure that you weren't planning on making any changes to the employee contributions. Um, at this point, and I would recommend not, um, just because it's late game. Um, but I did, did want to put that out. And then I did make some suggestions, the high deductible health plan that we have. Um, had to raise up the employee deductible. Um, I believe it was. Two hundred, one hundred dollars, single and family respectively. Um, and so wanted to make the suggestion maybe that. You increase the contribution to the house savings accounts that you make right now. Obviously, don't, we don't need to cover all of that deductible because even with the PPO plan, the, the employees are still responsible for. Part of that deductible, um, but just maybe to, to narrow the gap a little bit. Um, again, that, that's something that we could discuss further, but just wanted to make you aware of that. At this point, and we'll discuss it in the next couple of weeks or if you have any other.
Work session to do that?
If you want to have a work session, you can do that.
But is that the way, is that what you want to do or?
Yeah.
You want to just adding everybody's information, get back to.
You know, I've provided you the information.
Right, we got.
And then if you all want to make it, if you want to have a work session to discuss it, that's fine. We can get that scheduled. Um.
Good, and we can make a decision at a work session.
Correct.
So. We've got the information.
We have the information, yeah.
Yeah.
See if we put it on our next agenda.
That's fine.
Okay. Done good.
Um. I have. Two more things, garage sale. The town, my garage sales are set for September twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and I just need the information. Um, by this coming Tuesday at four P M. If people want to be included on the map and we will get those maps out. Um, on Thursday and over the weekend via Towne Fountain Lake, on the website, Facebook. Um, and we'll have maps available around town. Um. We do have an issue, uh, townwide cleanup is, um, usually in the fall. And, um, considering, uh, the personnel issues that we quickly run into. Um, the recommendation is that maybe we put off the townwide cleanup, um, until the spring. And just skip the, the fall, the one in October. Um, it ends up putting a lot of burden on our, the guys that are there. Five or six hours of overtime and they end up taking the brunt of the work, um, versus when it first started, we had volunteers that would come and help. So. I would recommend putting it off.
Okay with everybody?
Is there a downside?
Hmm?
Is there a downside?
People keep their stuff till spring.
Somebody wants to get rid of their stuff in a hour.
Yeah, I think there are people that. That, you know, use that weekend.
They use that weekend.
Garage and.
Oh.
And get rid of it without.
The default cleaning rather than the spring cleaning.
Years it'll last.
I mean, if the people accept that they need to, um, get rid of like mattresses and that sort of stuff, they can call Republic Services. Um, which I guess we did.
Is that actually working?
You know, yes, actually, um, so. No, I mean, seriously, two weeks ago, so on another side note, um, Republic Services, we had massive i- issues with them. Two weeks ago, um, Ginny made a phone call and had a come to Jesus call, uh, with somebody and. Then, uh, our municipal manager representative came down and we had a come to Jesus meeting with him. He was, um. Very understanding and took the criticism and took it back. And this week, after having fifty calls two weeks ago, people that didn't have trash picked up. We had like three last week and like one or two this week. Uh, so they're making some changes at our public services. They have a new operations manager. Um, they, he said that they had some trucks that were, um, old.
Right.
And needing some ma- needing, um, maintenance and they're switching those out with a, with a location. That has, you know, federal maintenance or has maintenance facilities that can address the issues rather than, you know, let them sit here. Um, so we're hoping that that, you know, they continue to, um, the service that we've enjoyed the last two weeks as opposed to.
Yeah, I think he literally may have gone on one of the routes. I got a call about exactly where's the couch we need to pick up. And I think he was calling from the truck. So hopefully it'll continue.
So great. So some animals living in there.
They left it out there for, I mean, I think, didn't you guys try like four times to get them?
We called, my daughter called them, set up four appointments. My wife set up sticks and they didn't show up for any.
Until we. Yeah.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, Julie documented to her credit, uh, she and Karen. So yeah, Julie documented to her credit, uh, she and Karen were documenting phone calls two weeks together, over fifty calls. And that's a lot of troubleshooting for us to have to handle, so we were very clear about the fact that we would rather not manage their issues and we would rather rebid the contract than have to go through that pain. So hopefully the improvement will continue and stay consistent. And hopefully we can help some of the businesses who are having the same issue.
I just wanted, I guess I have a couple more things I apologize. Council training, a couple of you signed up for, you, you signed it up for thirty, did you get information on how to log in?
It's, it's on the flyer, I believe.
Okay, I'm going to follow up and make sure that you have.
Okay.
The recording, you're talking about.
Well, and did you receive information?
No, not as a recording, I, I, I got another email promoting the.
Yeah, that's what we got.
Okay, because I did register the two of you and requested reporting for you.
Okay.
So I need to follow up and make sure that you guys get that one.
Follow up reporting.
Oh, okay.
Karen, you can take me off, I have to teach.
Yeah, I didn't, I hadn't heard from you, so I didn't send you up. Okay, and then finally, um, if I could just get you all to approve minutes that I've sent out over the last month. Minutes for July nineteenth, August ninth, and August twenty-third. Hopefully you've all received those.
Did get them, I know that. Motion made by Rich, is there a second to approve those minutes?
Second.
Second by Bill Hand.
Are you saying electronically?
The minutes?
Approve them electronically, or do we sign in the book?
I've got them in the book, but you all make a motion to approve them.
Oh, okay.
You skipped it at the beginning.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
It wasn't on the copy.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same time, motion carries.
That's all.
Karen, your question on the NIMS, Clyde indicated what classes he thought.
Well, that was a result of something that Bill brought up at one of his meetings, he indicated that people needed to have that, I know you probably don't have any of the NIMS training. So I need to get with you and get you in contact with Clyde Avery, so between the two of you, you all can set up a date, and I'm just going to take myself out of the middle of it.
Sure.
I'm not sure that the rest, I think the rest of you are all should be set, I think it's just the basic training, is that correct?
Yeah.
That was, that's okay, because there are three recording levels, it's like one of the last.
I have my master's in that.
Oh, anything else? Turn these reports.
Not much to report, uh, on the the petition for judicial review of the planned commission's decision on the forfeit team loss matter, Mansfield appeal. Uh, the brief was timely filed by the petitioner's counsel, I think on September third. Pretty much as expected, the thrust of it is, is that our ordinance should include a procedure whereby e- even in a, in a, uh, in a PUD zone. If there's cha- variances from the standard kinds of setbacks and the other kinds of things that would normally require variance, there should be provisions for the B Z A to be involved rather than just the planned commission's decision. There are some other things, again, pretty much all expected, but I would say that's the major thrust, I don't know if you had a chance to read it or not. I sent one to Jenny, um, and I told you I was going to get ahold of you yesterday, and I didn't do it, but I do need to do that.
I only read it over the weekend.
Okay, uh, so, uh, I don't know, tomorrow morning, or if not, probably Friday, I'd like to chat with you just to see if you get your thoughts. I've already started, though, putting together a response that I want to, I'll make sure we get in timely so that we'll be able to have our hearing on the October fourth, so.
October fourth hearing.
Uh, and other than that, I don't have anything else. If any of you have any questions, or if you'd like to see the brief, I'd be happy to send it to you anyways, so interested.
I would.
Okay. Oh, just sent it all, how's that?
There you go.
Thank you.
Next, uh, is utility shut-off ordinance violation. If there's anyone present or online, this is your opportunity, if you have a shut-off notice or an ordinance violation, to address the council. Hearing none in the room and hearing none online, we'll move on to citizen input.
Hi, this is Tracy, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, right, this is Tracy Fox, um, a couple of things. One, thanks for offering the online option for these meetings, it's one of the few ways I can ever really make it and participate, so thank you. Um, a couple of things, I know a number of you have sent me names of people to add to T G L two. I would say the new and improved, but it's really just the same old thing, but a different, uh, anyway, different, different name. Um, and thank you, we're up to about six hundred and fifty subscribers, which I'm happy about, so it's easiest for you to send me their email addresses, it's kind of clunky for them to try to sign up on their own. So thank you for that, keep sending them my way, and then, um, two, Jim, I would have, uh, Counselor Clevinger, I'm sure Don would love to see that brief, and, um, three. What was my third one? Oh, thank you to Jenny and Amber for helping us try to figure out a relocation space for the farmer's market while the important park renovations are going on, we really appreciate the creative juices going in to figure things out, and we hope that we are able to relocate to the basketball court because as I'm sure many of you have heard me and Chad say, the closer we can stay to the original site, the easier it is for people to remember where to go and to be able to benefit from the farmer's market, so appreciate you helping us with that, and just let us know as soon as you know. When you think that move might need to take place, because we'll get the word out as soon as we can, so, um, otherwise, I think that's it, but thanks.
Tracy, this is Jim Clevinger, uh, could you get me Don's email address or your, oh, never mind.
Okay, you're good.
Okay, thank you.
They're going to send it to me.
No problem, okay.
Tracy, Tracy, this is Bill Githens, are you going to be coming to the library again this fall?
Um, I hope so, we really love that space and we love working with Erin, so, um, we wanted to get this little relocation worked out, and then I was going to touch base with her, I hope that's still okay on your end, as far as you know.
Fine with me, I'm just, you know.
Yep, yep, um, I, I appreciate that nudge, because I do need to get with her and talk to Chad about dates and everything, but, um, we love that space, so thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. The other citizen, wait. Are you going to be able to bring that around the lake, is that, this is going to be.
It's just in town limits, yeah. There's some work already going on around the lake, um, the county, in fact, I think has supported a grant to R E M C and SURF to reception. There's some going on the north end as well. Uh, and in some cases, it's R T C or R E M C or SURF or a partnership among those companies. So I think eventually it probably will go all the way around. Uh, and I believe that the academy has put out, uh, its own. I don't want to call it an R F Q, but they've been talking to companies about, uh, bringing fiber to them.
Okay, is there any, we could be updated on the R E M C that was going along with the town around the lake?
I mean, the school is also involved with, like, the school has received several grant dollars and I think separate, um, applications to bring fiber to rural areas where sometimes there's only like four to six houses, and that's why it's appearing in some areas around us. So part of that fiber hut too, that fiber hut is a partnership between R T C and R E M C and the town. That fiber hut allows them to come in from, um, the south and west side of the lake, and then it'll allow them to go further north and reach other rural areas. But it also will allow our provider, SURF, to use that hut as a, a place to house the cabling and all. I don't exactly know what you call the, the technical terms for it, but, um, so it's kind of around us right now in certain parts. I don't know all of them, because in some cases, it's a partnership with the school or the county, or they're in the area and they do an extra, you know, they do whatever they can. Some of those companies are capitalized too, where they have so much time to spend that money. So.
Marsh County R E M C, that's who you.
I could reach out to him and get a status for, like, ask him the status, the community and put something on T G L. They're pretty good about, um, responding and communicating, to be honest. So I can ask them to do something like that. It, it might be of interest to some of the Lake people for sure.
Yeah, definitely.
Here, building on the great home. Jenny, when do you think we'll see some action from SURF to start to?
They would probably love to get going at any second, part of their, um, plan is for that fiber hut to go in. And I know the fiber hut, um, folks working on that have got their permit, and I think they've even been in front of our B Z A at this point. And they're, uh, the guy we've worked with there to sign that agreement was here in the past week and has said that in about three weeks, they think they'll be able to pour the cement slab. So with that going in, that helps SURF with their plan. Honestly, they're going to wait until we get a contract, um, and this, this body will have to decide on how we do permitting, because we don't have a specific permit for that. That's one reason we're meeting with Plymouth and Bourbon, Bourbon did it one way, through minutes in a meeting like this. Plymouth does it a different way, uh, and we kind of want to know what we're facing before we make a decision about that, so. Um, it'll depend on how quickly we can get our contract, and if we get it done in October, they would love to get it done by end of year. We will be a priority to them because we do have money invested in it. Whereas some of the communities they've worked in on are on grant or, you know, their own capital. So.
So would it be feasible to see subscribers signing up by spring?
Yeah.
Um, and then besides my usual grass concerns on the fiscal, and now to the east, I don't know, maybe. Davis and Ohio is a water pumping station. There's, and I walk by here for money, there's a large tree, very damp, it's hanging precipitously over top of the roof. Three phase power lines and the generator, so we could go knock off three of them.
By the water plant. Be right where your trail starts going there?
Yeah.
In that whole terrain.
So, thank you.
Any other citizen, but. Moving on, council issues.
Rich? We've discussed this before, I just escaped, we, have we set a date for a hearing on the, um, statements for both of us?
Yes. And that was, it's in the newspaper, it's up on the website, Amber's got something, you sent that to her, but.
Citizens tomorrow, right, it comes out tomorrow, so it would be in that, right, that'd be the first wave of people.
Thank you.
Good, good question. Do you have anything else?
No, I'll have a sign and sheet for that hearing.
Karen, so you know. You have anything else?
Karen will be at that meeting too. You guys have to be patient with me.
And I have nothing. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I'm making adjournment.
Is there a second? Motion made by Bill Hand, second by Bill Clevinger, all those in favor?
Wait, who's second is that?
Well done again.